Okay, good evening everyone and thank you for tuning into the 2020 Hamilton County School Board debates. Tonight's debate will feature District Two candidates Tom DiCosimo and Marco Perez. My name is Molly Blankenship and I am the Executive Director of Chattanooga 2.0, Chattanooga and Hamilton Counties Community Wide Partnership, Dedicated to Transforming Education and Workforce Development Outcomes from Birth Through Career. Thank you to our partners WRCB Channel 3 and the Chattanooga Times Free Press for co-hosting these critically important debates alongside us. I would also like to thank our candidates for participating in this important conversation this evening and for their interest in serving on behalf of students, families and teachers on the Hamilton County School Board. Our candidates answered some get to know you questions ahead of tonight's debate. So if you'd like to learn more, we encourage you to visit the WRCB Decision 2020 page. Chattanooga 2.0 was born out of a recognition that strong educational outcomes, birth through career, are essential to our community's economic growth and progress. We believe that strong leadership at all levels of the educational system is necessary to our success as a community. And so we recognize just how important these races are today during these unique and challenging times and also well into the future. And so thank you again to all of you, our viewers, for joining us, for engaging in this conversation. Thank you to our candidates for your willingness to serve our community in such a vital way. And without any further ado, it is my pleasure to introduce David Carroll of WRCB Channel 3 and Dave Flessner of the Chattanooga Times Free Press who will be moderating this evening's debate. David and Dave, it is in your hands.
All right, thank you Molly and candidates, we want to thank you for being here. Dave and I will go over the rules of the debate for our candidates and also for those who are watching. Now both candidates will leave their cameras and microphones on at all time during the debate. Each candidate is given two minutes to make an opening statement. Dave and I will alternate asking a total of 15 questions. Now three of the questions will be presented by stakeholders living in District Two. Each candidate will be given one minute to respond to each question and an optional 30 second rebuttal if appropriate. When there are 15 seconds left, you'll hear a little ding and also a time notice screen will flash. Now the time begins as soon as the candidate begins speaking. Once time has expired at the end of an answer, the moderator can choose to allow candidate to complete a sentence, but the candidate should not begin a new thought. Each candidate will also be given two minutes to make a closing statement at the end of our forum tonight. The questions we are asking were not provided to the candidates in advance and candidates may not use the internet, cellphone or other outside assistance to answer the questions during our debate tonight. The goal of our debate is simply to introduce the candidates of District Two and their platforms. As moderators, we may interrupt to clarify any questions or urge an explanation of any acronym or unfamiliar terms and to keep them on time, which we hope the candidates will be able to do. We will start with the opening statements in alphabetical order and then alternate who answers first. Candidates, do you have any questions about our format tonight? Well if not, Tom DiCosimo, you're up first. You have two minutes to make your opening statement.
Thank you Dave. I'm proud to be a candidate for the District Two School Board seat to represent the citizens of Red Bank Rivermont, Stewart Heights and the surrounding areas, Signal Mountain, its children, teacher schools, families and taxpayers. Some of my most formative years were spent at Signal Mountain Junior High where my mother was a longtime art teacher. My principal was Dr. Dell L. Carter, who would go on to become our county's school superintendent. Dr. Carter stressed the importance of discipline, personal responsibility and the honor and dignity of hard work and respect for each of all of our other students. I believe every child in Hamilton County has the fundamental right to receive what I call a foundational public education that will prepare them to enter the workforce or to continue their education. I believe the socio-economic health and vitality of our community depends on having a well-educated populace in a trained workforce. I'm a businessman with over 40 years of experience as a CPA and a consultant in the world of corporate finance. I believe in giving back to the community and have been privileged to serve on many of our local boards and throughout my career. As the United Way Chairman for the Fund Drive, I developed a keen awareness of the serious challenges many of our families face throughout our county. Our focus was on childhood literacy and its impact on the child's ability to learn and succeed in life. I believe that I'm uniquely qualified to bring a fresh perspective to the school board and public education in Hamilton County. I'm a team player and look forward to working with other board members and the administration to affect positive change. I look forward to answering these questions and I want to thank the Times Free Press, WRCB and 2.0 for this opportunity.
All right, thank you Tom. Marco, you have two minutes to make your opening statement.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the invitation to our partners here, Channel 3 and the Times Free Press and Chattanooga 2.0. I'm Marco Perez, I'm running for District Two. As was referenced before, I would be representing Signal Mountain, Red Bank, Stewart Heights, Lepton City and Mountain Creek. I have 20 years of management experience, both in the nonprofit and for-profit world. I have dedicated my life to serving the communities in which I've lived. I believe very much in seeking the peace and prosperity of the places where we live and to really thrive as they thrive, we thrive as well. I have worked for a nonprofit called Launch Chattanooga for many years, helping develop small businesses in this community, especially in underrepresented groups. I too am a small business owner. I am a consultant for small businesses, but I am as well a part of a startup that serves the outdoor recreation community. But I don't approach this opportunity as a business owner primarily. I approach it as a concerned parent who has a senior in high school right now and a freshman in our public school systems at Signal Mountain Public School. I understand very well that this coming year is going to be a very impactful and the future years will have some repercussions from everything that we're living together as a community. And to me, it's important that we do excellence in all that we do. The education of our students is our highest priority in our community and we need to make sure that every one of our students has an opportunity for an excellent education regardless of where they live.
All right, thank you both for your opening statements and for observing and listening to the train whistle, our designated warning beep there. First question is for Marco Perez and you'll have two minutes to respond to this. Is that right? Make sure I get my rules right here. You'll have a minute to respond to this. It is related to COVID-19 and that and the April tornado have caused a great deal of grief and anxiety stemming from the loss of jobs, loss of homes, loss of life and the canceled events, postponed events, weddings, sports events and so much more. Do you believe schools should have a role in supporting students' mental and emotional health? That's a yes or no question. If you answer yes, how do you plan to work with the district to accomplish the goal? If you answer no, why not?
Thank you. Yes, I do believe the schools play a role, whether they want it or not. The students come with the impact of these realities around them. And the school needs to be ready to support them because although our goals are academic and growth, we're really developing a whole person. Their behavior health matters, their well-being matters as a whole. We're working to develop leaders for tomorrow and in that their ability to interact and be resilient in the midst of circumstances that are difficult for all of us is important for us. For teachers to be able to teach, they need some of these weights that these students carry from the realities and the impact of what they've lived to not burden the educational process. So I think we need to ensure that the schools have the right counselors and the right support staff that can help enhance the education of our students.
All right, Tom, you want to answer the question? Would you like to hear it again?
No, I think I've got it. Absolutely. The schools play a major role in providing children counseling. My daughter is an art therapist. She has a nonprofit that focuses on working with children to help them overcome trauma. She works all over the world, mainly in refugee camps. So I'm very well aware of what happens when children have trauma. Now, we do have families in Chattanooga that are perfectly equipped to handle the trauma of children. Well, I mean, when I say perfectly equipped, they've got the family unit structure. Too many of our childrens don't have that. Now, it is a combination of family and school. There's no question about it. For those children that don't have the family structure, I am completely in favor of having help they need in schools to help them through this trauma.
All right, Marco, do you have any rebuttal? Are you okay with that?
I agree that some families don't have the structure, but I think we need to really as a school system ensure that it's for all of our students, even those families that we assume have it all together. Many of them, the students arrive at school with baggage and necessities that we need to help support. So I think the school just has to realize that their vision and their mission is holistic and they need to ensure that we're supporting that vision and mission as we go forward.
Well, thank you both. Tom, the second question is about testing and accountability and it's to you first. With the pandemic, the usual annual standardized testing did not occur this spring to help measure student achievement and collectively to help measure the progress of particular classes and schools and the district as a whole in comparison with the rest of the state and the nation. If the pandemic persists, how will we know if students are on track, if they are learning what they're supposed to and what the impact of lost learning time due to the school closures have been? What policy would you support to ensure that student progress is being measured?
Well, I believe in testing and I believe in making sure that our students are progressing along to, you know, the benchmark I always refer to is where are we at the end of third grade as far as literacy? Once we achieve that, which we haven't, we're at 35%, take away our high performing schools and it gets way below 35%. I don't know. What does testing prove? Testing, we know what we've got to do. We've got to get these children reading on third grade level by third grade. So I'm just not sure of all the emphasis on the testing. We're in peculiar times. We're going to be testing for what we know is going to be a problem. Let's really focus on just getting the children ready to read. Obviously, testing is important, but we're in very tricky water here. I think we've got to really just focus on the basics and make sure these children are reading by third grade, at third grade level.
Marco, how should we measure student performance and achievement and how do we ensure accountability for academic results in your mind?
So without a doubt, this year will have an impact on our results. Starting in March, our students left the schools and many were able to connect and many weren't. I think my greatest concern is for those students who are left out of the picture. They don't have the connectivity, they don't have the resources and we need to make sure that we're not letting them fall too far behind. We need to make sure we're helping them catch up and remediating some of the lost time that they've had. So I don't think we need to use testing punitively for our schools in the following year. I do think we need to make sure to ensure that we're meeting some benchmarks. I don't think there's a teacher or a parent who appreciates the amount of time that testing consumes in our students' progress and time, but we do understand the value of being able to measure where we are in the benchmarks that it produces for us. So I think in the following year, we will need to have some measurement, but it can't be punitive. It can't be used against the school because of the fact that we have no previous experience of what we're experiencing right now. It should be used for us to be able to enhance education and to be able to see where exactly we need to do remediation for our students as we move forward. So yeah, I think we need some kind of benchmark. I just don't think we need the punitive side of it if we're not meeting the standards that is expected.
Tom, do you have any difference with Marco on that? Any rebuttal?
Not a rebuttal, but I want to emphasize that testing is very tough on teachers. Testing is tough on students. We're in, I agree with Marco, we're in very uncharted water here. Testing takes a lot of time, adds a lot of stress. Let's add as little stress as possible. We know that there's going to be some backsliding and let's let the teachers really concentrate on just positive influence, positive work, getting that comprehension up. Maybe you just kind of lay off the, lay off the testing as much as you can right now.
Right, our next question comes from a concerned parent who lives in District Two, Erica Cody. Would you please ask your question? Is Erica there? If not, we should probably move on to the next question.
I believe she's coming off of mute.
Okay, we'll give her a few more seconds. There she is.
Hi, so actually, I'm not Erica. I am another concerned parent in District Two. My name is Stephanie Dalton and I'm a parent of a rising kindergartner who will be attending Alpine Crest Elementary. And I had a question about school safety related to the reentry plan. But the coronavirus still being an active threat in the community and across the nation, the majority of parents I know are really concerned about what that's going to look like for children and school staff when they start school back in August. Even with the option to do Hamilton County School at home, those students who are involved in sports or other extracurricular activities will still have to be going to school and be exposed potentially to, you know, risk of coronavirus. So my question is, do you agree with the district's four-phase reopening plan for fall 2020? If so, why? And if not, how would you modify it?
And Marco, you go first on this one.
So I approached this first as someone who's dealing with the exact same questions on a daily basis. I have two kids in school and we're trying to figure out what the best solution. We appreciate the work that the district has done in coming up with a plan. We're actually very much at the front of developing these plans. But I also understand the fears that, I understand them very personally, the fears that surround us because the impact will eventually come home or may impact those around us. So and especially the teachers that are in a classroom. I don't think we have a perfect solution. I don't think there's something that just will magically solve this whole thing. And I think as a district, we're trying to come up. So HCS Home, HCS Virtual and HCS School are the solutions we've been given. But you mentioned your age group. That doesn't solve it for kindergarten to second grade where they won't be able to learn virtually. So I'm appreciative, but like everybody else, I think we're just going to have to be flexible through the year learning what the best path forward is for all of us.
All right, Tom?
Absolutely. We just don't know. Again, uncharted waters. There's no unanimity on how to reopen schools or whether schools can reopen. The information contradicts each other. There are differing opinions among parents, students, teachers. We do know that there is danger in the COVID. There is danger by leaving children at home because of the psychological problems that children have. I mean, they talk about violence, you know, the violence in the house and, you know, mental health issues. So I kind of understand the four plans. I guess I would say this. If, let's remember to ask the teachers whatever we do because we do have older teachers, we have younger teachers. That's the risk to me. The children can probably handle it. I'm worried about the teachers. Bring the teachers in, get their opinions.
Marco, anything to finish up on here?
Yeah, I think we really need to make sure that we have the entire community in mind as we move forward. The students impact parents and families who impact other people around them and this is a very difficult opportunity for us to decide what the right answer is. So I feel you. It's a challenge for all of us. I hear many teachers over and over who are concerned about their own health or the health of their family members who might be vulnerable. And again, we're dealing with something we've never dealt with before. So we need to ensure that we're doing the best thing for all of us.
Stephanie, thank you very much for participating. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
For this question, we'll first go to Tom DiCosimo. Hamilton County School students have recently been engaging in protests regarding racial injustice. Are you proud of what these students have done and said? Would you give them a pat on the back or do you feel like they were out of line?
I am very proud of our students for expressing the freedom of speech. Proud of their freedom to petition, to redress their grievances. I'm proud that they understand they have the freedom of assembly. I was against the fist. That's well known. I was against the clenched fist that underneath it said nonviolence. It's a mixed message. I think when you look around the country, what you're seeing is a lot of anarchy, looting and violence that have come into these peaceful protests. I think the children, I say children, these young adults that are protesting, it's wonderful for them to do that. But we've got to be careful because there's an element that is creeping into these protests that quite frankly is very dangerous. And I think there have been other cities where people have been hurt. So I am for the students' ability to protest nonviolently.
Marco?
I'm allowed to hear the change. Obviously, there was a lot of uproar around this issue. One of my own daughters wanted to participate in the event and I wanted to support the students as they gathered. I can say that it was the most respectful protest that I've ever participated in or observed. The students in Hamilton County were very clear about their concerns. They were very clear about some of the paths that they see our community going, that they are no longer finding acceptable. They want to see changes in racial and social injustices. And I was very thankful for the way that they addressed those and the way that they were able to communicate their concerns to our community as a whole. I think, you know, as a father of young people, we don't always necessarily agree, but we need to educate our students to know how to speak to their issues. In this case, I think we as a community are seeing the concerns around social injustices and we want to make sure that we are addressing them for the future of our community. And I'm very thankful that our students are standing up and speaking or standing up or kneeling and being silent about these injustices that they're seeing as they did, you know, for eight and a half minutes. And so we need to support them in expressing themselves and we need to make sure that we are providing opportunities for them to do it in a way that is healthy and encourage them along that way as we move forward.
Before I give Tom a chance for rebuttal, I just want to make sure I understand something. You said you appreciated the change. You mean in what?
That, I appreciate that they are wanting change. And yeah, in some of the injustices that they're seeing. We need to, we need to support that desire for improvement in our society as a whole.
Okay, Tom, anything to rebut there?
Not necessarily rebut, but I did have an issue, not only with the clenched fist. I did have an issue with the protesting police brutality. Look, there are some bad apples in everything we do and what happened was absolutely just horrible to Mr. Floyd. It's a stain on our country, but to have a sign that said, "Come protest police brutality", you know, that's not what I would, that's not exactly the way I would do it. It's framing. Because our police officers, 99%, they are there to protect us. They are the only thing that protect the criminal element from our free society. So I still do have a little bit of a, not a little bit, I did have a problem with the blanket police brutality that that symbol showed. So it was a clenched fist, didn't like it. I think I've made myself clear on that. Didn't appreciate painting our first responders and our police with that police brutality. Whatever, as police brutality, excuse me.
Marco, this question is about educational equity and it's to you first. Nearly half of the students in Hamilton County Schools are of color and one in three is economically disadvantaged. Educational equity is defined as sort of the intentional supports and policies designed to meet the individual needs of each learner to eliminate disparities so that these students can excel in learning alongside their peers. Should equity, in your view, in education be a priority for Hamilton County Schools? And if so, what strategies would you propose to address these disparities across our district?
Yeah, absolutely. It should be a priority in our Hamilton County Schools. We have significant achievement gaps because of the socioeconomic differences in our community and we need to ensure that we are helping support our community with extra, you know, resources in order to reduce those achievement gaps. I define educational equity as allowing each student to reach their fullest potential. And in order for us to do that, you know, I've seen the benefits of public school. I am very thankful for the opportunities that have been there. But I also believe that students all over the district have the same potential and the same capacity, but something along the way has distracted them from the path to excellence that they can achieve. So as a district, we already have an Office of Equity that is looking to enhance the opportunities for all of our students. And I think we need to continue supporting this direction so that every one of our students can achieve their best opportunity, their fullest potential, can reach the best results that they have capacity to do. And as an institution, we can continue to provide those opportunities for them. So we again need the resources, we need the counselors, we need the behavioral support there. Anything that can help us reach that goal and meet that need, we need to be able to provide it as a community and as a county.
Tom, how important is school equity and how can we best achieve it?
Well, equity is like that clenched fist. It's a word that I think that's a bit loaded. It almost connotes that there is no equity there. So it's not a favorite word of mine. Let me state this positively. Let me state this positively. I believe in the absolute fundamental right for every child to have a foundational education. Now, I like to talk about equal opportunity. Every child should have access to a foundational education because we do know that education is the key to a child's thriving. Education is the pathway out of poverty. So we, it's, equity is a bit of a loaded word. I prefer, I wish we didn't use it. It's kind of a negative to me. It's a negative to a lot of people. But education is the pathway to prosperity. These children need to come to school ready to learn. We'll get into that maybe a little later, but I think I've said my piece.
Marco, any rebuttal to that?
Well, I guess I think one of the differences in how we address this is, I'm not sure what Tom, and I hope he explains it later, means by foundational. My concern is to hear, when I hear that, is that it's only a foundational. You know, they need to learn reading, they need to learn writing, they need to learn arithmetic. I think our education has to be excellent. I want every one of our students to have an opportunity for an excellent education, regardless of where they live. I want them to be able to, to reach for the stars. And I want to know that our system and our, and our schools will provide every opportunity for them to do that. And again, that's what reaching their fullest potential is, that we have surrounded them with the support that we need as a community and as, and as a school to help them achieve their best, their best results.
Thank you, candidates. And now our next question tonight comes from Rain Heatherton, Heathington, I'm sorry, a rising sophomore at Red Bank High School. Rain, what's your question? Are you there?
Thank you. Good evening to you guys. I'm a student at Red Bank High School, and I'm also in the Future Ready Institute program. And my question is about digital equity, you know? And I just feel like every student is not the same. We all need different, different supports to succeed. Not every student is at the same starting point. And, you know, sometimes students have to get their way up to the starting point before they can even begin getting a decent education. When the coronavirus came to our city and our schools closed in March, some students already had computers and internet at home like myself, while others did not. Like I had friends whose Chromebooks were broken, screens were broken, keys were missing, just all in all not working. These are necessary resources to completing our schoolwork. When some students have connectivity and others don't, this can cause certain student groups to perform higher than others at no fault in their own. What would you do to address this issue, especially if the coronavirus pandemic forces schools to close again during this fall and winter?
Thank you for your question, Rain. That goes first to Tom DeCosimo.
Yeah. Well, regardless of coronavirus or not, there should never be a divide for anything between children and schools. All children should have, all schoolchildren should have good, fast internet connectivity. They should all have good, solid notebooks or pads or whatever it takes. That is unacceptable that any of your friends or any of your colleagues did not have the proper access. We have got EPB Fi, and we should make sure that all children have that access. All children have the, the, the equipment that they need. Every children should have access to reliable broadband, the equipment, distance learning. Nobody should have any deficit whatsoever.
Marco, what should be done to upbridge this digital divide? Ensure online, online learning opportunities are available to all?
Well, I agree with your question and that the question really came to light because of COVID. Thankfully, the district had already done some investment so that we have a one-to-one ratio in most of our schools now. As you share, not everybody's device work properly, not everybody's system. So I think there's three areas where the digital divide is actually observed in the work that we do. The first being obviously the devices. People have to have devices that can connect. We weren't expecting this level of need of connectivity, but I'm very thankful that even in our elementary schools, a lot of, most of our students were able to access some kind of device to be able to connect. We need, as Tom said, we need connectivity in the internet. There's no point in having a device if you don't have fast internet. We're the gig city, and as the gig city, we should be having everybody of our, every one of our citizens have connectivity. But that still breaks down is if, as you suggested, the computer doesn't work. And this is something that is very concerning for me moving forward. Not every family knows how to fix the problem if it breaks down. And so one day, when the computer breaks down, may end up being a week or two of students not having access to their school and their classes if someone in their family doesn't know how to, how to bridge that gap and support the technology that we need. So, so we're going to need to partner with multiple organizations, multiple businesses. We need EPB and Comcast to step up to the challenges that we're living as a, as a community. We're going to need technology partners to be able to call on in the event that some family in our, in our community needs support in connecting or figuring out how to engage with the classroom setting in a way that they haven't, because teachers won't be able to be running to every classroom and fixing these problems, and we don't have enough technology staff to do that. So there's a big need ahead of us. A program like the Future Ready Institute is preparing many of our students for that, but we, we still need to get ahead of the curve and be able to meet the demand that we're going to have.
Tom, anything else you want to add on that?
Yeah, I'm going to go back to fundamental education for just a second, please. Fundamental education, foundational education, by the way, means arts, sciences, music. A foundational ed, I don't know what an excellent education is. I do know what a foundational education is. It's a springboard to college, springboard to technical schools, springboard right into work. It's children who know how to think critically, have a broad-based appreciation, as I said, of the music, history, arts, critically important to a well-rounded child.
All right, Rain Heatherton, thanks a lot, and good luck to your Red Bank High School, okay? We appreciate you being part of this this evening. All right, we're going to talk about Superintendent Dr. Brian Johnson. He's been on the job for three years. So certainly he has a record that he can defend or people can take some shots at if they like. And it appears as though he's going to be here for a while. So let's look at the three years of Dr. Brian Johnson. And I'll ask you first, Marco, to give him a letter grade, just like you'd grade a student. Explain that grade, and then tell me what sort of relationship you would have with this superintendent? Would it be personal, professional, business, adversarial? Marco, you're up.
I'm very pleased with Dr. Johnson and his, his support of our school system. He's been recognized regionally as the best superintendent in the Southeast. We have seen the fact that he has opened the doors of communication to our community. He, he opens town halls, communicates to families, communicates to teachers. He, he's doing an excellent job in that. So as far as the grade, your first question, I would give him an A. I'm very satisfied with his work. Why? We have seen improvement. It takes years to see improvement, but we've seen improvement very quickly. We're the fastest improving district in the state of Tennessee. Now, that also means we came from far away and, and I, we have 45 schools that were ranked as, as Level 5 growth, 21 of which were Level 5 on everything, 32 reward schools. I'm very satisfied. So I look forward to, now, my job as a school board member is to continue to hold them accountable to those results, and I'll continue to do that.
Tom?
It may be. And I'm very happy to have Brian. I think Dr. Johnson is doing a lot of good things. But we're not there yet. You know, we have to judge CEO on educational performance, management and control of, you know, the central office, financial, physical facilities, safety. I'm not at all pleased with this deal at Northgate. Now, I just don't quite understand that. But, you know, I think there's a lack of leadership there, maybe some maturity. I'm not, I'm not sure. I was shocked to find that, that the developer was going individually to the various school board members and politic in this thing. I just, that, that was very off-putting. I'm not at all pleased with the facilities report. I'm not pleased with the fact that we tried to ran down the $34 million tax increase last year when we knew we had a $1.3 billion facility report. I'm not against spending money, but I'm against, I'm for knowing what all the chips look like before we make that kind of a decision. I would have Dr. Johnson, he is an employee of the school board. He is an employee of the school board. He reports to them, only them. Thank you.
Marco, any response?
Well, I think it is unfair to put the $1.3 billion price tag on Dr. Johnson. I think we have been kicking the can down the road for many years, and this is the result of decades of disinvestment in our, in our buildings. Again, I, I put it on the progress we're having. I think we can become the best district in the state. I think we have to become the best district in the state. And I think especially in reaction to this crisis, we just show the capacity to pivot very quickly and approach the crisis very well. So I, I think he's done an excellent job, and I'm very proud to work with him and to hold him accountable to future results.
Let me follow up then a little bit about the discussion you initiated about school buildings and facilities. As most of us know, many Hamilton County school buildings throughout the district are in need of repair, and some have been for decades. So do you support the final report on Hamilton County school facilities, which recommended a three-year, 10-year plan for remedying the district's facilities needs with a total price tag of about $891 million? If you do, how should this plan be funded? If not, what should be done to address these critical needs of aging buildings and a backlog of maintenance? Tom, a question of school facilities to you first then.
Thank you. And my, my, my point was the 34 million should have been looked at in conjunction with the 1.3 billion total. Every child should have a clean, healthy nurturing environment. What has happened over the years, and it's not Dr. Johnson's fault, is our buildings have been shamefully let go. It's terrible. Even now, our budget only has like $3 million to, you know, $3 million a year to support 78 schools? It's absurd. There's no way we can spend $800 million over 10 years. That's, that's a pipe drain. Now, what we can do is make a hard look at our budget and start spending the money that is necessary to keep these buildings in order. These buildings are not disposable. They are disposable when you don't maintain them. That's not Dr. Johnson's fault. But look, the 800 million, whatever it is, it's a pipe drain. We, we will never spend that kind of money.
Marco?
Well, again, this is part of deferring maintenance, deferring investment for, for decades. And so, and some of it has even some, some history in the consolidation of our school systems. And, and so we have a huge need ahead of us. The MGT, MGT study allows us to see the reality of every single one of our buildings of where it is, and we're going to have to prioritize. I think in 10 years, we're not going to raise $890 million or 1.3 billion, depending on which one of the studies we, we look at. But we do have to prioritize, and I think this will take extra investment. I think as a community, we need to see that these buildings are completely outside of the realm of what should be acceptable for us. And I really believe that between philanthropic partners, corporations, and individuals, along with all of us who are, who are reaping the fruit of, of the benefits of a positive education, we need to reinvest in our buildings, and we need to be proud of what we present to the rest of our community as, as who we are as Hamilton County. And so those buildings have to be fixed. We don't have a choice. We can't just leave them in disrepair and continually say it's way too much money or it has to fit within our operational budget that we present every year. We have to be able to, to encourage the community to look beyond that and prepare our schools for the next 30 years so that in 30 years, we're not dealing with a $10 billion budget to, to fix and improve our buildings because we've kept pushing it down the road. We've got to start dealing with this now.
Tom, if, as you say, we can't afford 891 million, how much do we need to spend? How do we typically address this issue?
That's a good question, but it's a whole, we, we, look, I met, when I met with Brent Goldberg and went over the budget, the 2020 budget, I said, "What is this 20, what's this $12 million cushion we have every year?" He said, "Well, that's because we, we, when we budget, we budget a full contingent of teachers and support staff, knowing that we're not going to get there, and knowing in the first two months, we're going to have a lot of people leave." That results every year in a $12 million cushion. Now, that $12 million compares to, I think our defer, our maintenance is like $3 million. So what in the world? We could do a lot of money with $12 million. We could increase teacher pay. We could use it to give teachers the money they need to fund their, their classroom supplies. But the big majority, a big majority of that could go, can you imagine what we could do with $10 million a year going into our schools for deferred maintenance? See, I think in a $500 million organization, and that's 65% of the Hamilton County budget, we can find the money we need to get this deferred maintenance going. Now, we're going to need new schools too. I mean, I'm, I'm, look, I'm for a clean, healthy nurturing environment for every student, but I have to do it in a way that this community can afford it. And I believe that there is money in that budget that is not being properly analyzed, and we've got the money there to do what we need to do.
Speaking of money, I want to take you back to spring of last year. Superintendent Johnson traveled the county, every district, essentially campaigning for a tax increase and spelling out all the different needs that the school system faced, in his opinion. And the majority of the school board went along with that and certainly endorsed the tax increase. However, a majority of the county commission did not. So to follow up on what we've been talking about and to kind of hone in on this tax increase issue, it will come back. Do you think that the schools will require additional funding from taxpayers? And if yes, what, I should say, if, if not from the taxpayers, where do you get this money? The state, private businesses? Where does it come from? And we'll start with Marco.
I think there's a couple of concerns. It always comes back to funding, right? If we want arts in the schools, if we want languages perhaps, if we want multiple of these opportunities, if we want more, more support staff and resources to be able to help our students. At the end of the day, everything we do costs money. And at the end of the day, we need to be able to support. Yes, we believe in a balanced budget. And in the years that are coming, with some of the uncertainty of COVID, we're going to have a challenge in just keeping the budget we have. And I think that's going to be a primary goal, is let's make sure not to reduce. That means the state needs to help support the mandates that they produce and the recommendations they give us. You know, our student to teacher, sorry, our counselor to teacher ratio is way below what the state recommends. Well, we need them to also come and support the work that we do. We also may need, in the midst of this crisis, some federal funding to help support some of the, some of the losses that our schools have. So at the end of the day, we need to make sure that we get our funding from everywhere we can. In addition to that, you know, we do see partnerships that may help us achieve some of our goals. But we may have to just continue to, to share with, with our community the growth and the opportunity and hope for their investment. But it will be up to the people. This is what taxpayers get to do. They get to ensure that we're, we're heading in the direction that, that is encouraging to them and supportive to them. So the truth is, I So, um, the truth is, I don't think we are going to get, uh, the buildings fixed through the operational budget because our operational budget is already tight. Uh, and we will need the community in many ways, through philanthropic and through, through corporate support, but also through, um, all of us pulling together to support our schools.
Okay, Tom, so when this tax increase issue comes up again, what are you going to say?
Well, let's go back to the other tax issue. I mean, the thirty four million we were talking about. You know what I was really upset about, again, was presenting that thirty four million dollar tax increase when we knew that we had this facilities report issued. Now, last year, we had almost twenty eight million dollars in growth funds to begin with, plus the thirty four million. And what was that thirty four million dollars doing? Look, I'm not against counselors, but we were going to hire four hundred, basically non, four hundred non-classroom employees. Uh, I just think we've got a four, a five, I'm going to call it a five hundred million dollar budget that is not being operated in an efficient way. We'll find it. I, I mentioned the twelve million dollars in padding they get every year on the salaries. Good night, what we can do with that. But, uh, no, I, I, I was very appalled by the fact that an outside group, Unify Ed, was used to strong arm a lot of the people in our community to try to get this budget passed. I'm opposed to that. This is our citizens that own the, our school system, not outside groups.
And Marco, a chance for rebuttal?
Well, I, I do think the use, uh, there's a couple of things there. The MGT report, uh, came out, uh, after the, the request for the thirty four million dollar hike. Um, I don't think it's fair to keep throwing a five hundred million dollar when, when that isn't our budget. Um, uh, but, uh, but at the same time, I, I, I think it, it is gonna, I, we're already tight. The, the, the cost and, and reaching the, the demands that we have is already difficult enough for us, uh, as, as a school system. I don't know where this twelve million dollar, uh, super habit is coming from, but I do think, um, that, uh, that we are going to need additional support in order to fix our schools. Fixing schools is expensive and you need lar- large capital amounts in order to do that.
Another funding issue, of course, is, uh, staff salaries and pay. A two point five percent mid-year raise was granted to the school teachers in the last school year. But the budget cuts stemming from the coronavirus and other reasons scrapped that planned pay increases for the next year for many teachers. Do we need to make additional salary increases for teachers? And if so, how, how do we fund that? Tom, question to you first. Do we need to raise teacher pay?
I believe in the need for competitive merit-based compensation for our teachers. I think, uh, it should be, uh, based on performance. And I think we should take into consideration the environment. But again, I'm, I'm going to go back to our four hundred and eighteen million dollar budget, which we have to add thirty five million dollars in debt service, Marco, plus we get about fifty million dollars from the, uh, federal government. That's about five hundred million, by the way. I mean, so that's what I call five hundred million. In our budget, we have got, had a hundred and sixty percent increase in people making over eighty thousand dollars a year in our school system. Though, th- these are not teachers. This is up in the central office and, and it includes principals and assistant principals. But there is, uh, look, we have got, this is not our money. We're, we've got plenty of money, I believe. We've got to manage our system. Now, if we manage the buzzet, budget and can't find the, uh, the, the amount of money we need for excellent education, then I'm, I'm open to, uh, options. I'm not against spending money for our teachers. Uh, whether the teachers should get payroll in, pay increases, no, I, you know, the teacher union elected to hire a hundred and eighty five, uh, uh, counselors last year and, and forgo. Uh, there are a lot of people who have lost their jobs in Chattanooga and Hamilton County.
Marco, do we need to raise teacher pay and how do we do that if you think so?
Well, I think teachers need to get paid well. I think teachers are professionals and we need to value, uh, their work. Uh, I do understand that we're dealing, and I think teachers understand that we're dealing with, uh, again, a, a situation that was uh, unexpected and, and, uh, and that there's a lot of uncertainty to, to what our uh, funding reality will be. But I think, uh, in order for us to be able to recruit and retain some of the top teachers uh, in the, in the area, we need to make sure that we are supporting them and financially, uh, delivering, uh, the, the expectations that, that they have in other places. So, um, otherwise, uh, you know, districts are competitive and districts are trying to ensure that they can hire the best teachers. And we want to be the district that is able to hire the best teachers. So yes, I, I believe firmly that we need to support our teachers and pay them well. Um, but I do also understand that right now, we're dealing with a, with a whole different situation where, where many of our, our community are, are suffering and, and we may have to, uh, just adjust to some of those realities as, as we move forward.
Tom, any rebuttal?
Yeah, let's talk about specifics. Our starting salary for a, uh, undergraduate degree is thirty nine thousand five hundred plus benefits. Don't forget benefits, please. Cote d'Arcy County is thirty six thousand. Walker County is thirty four thousand. They pay six percent Georgia income tax. So don't tell me we, thirty nine thousand five hundred dollars is, is below. Uh, the average salary, uh, for our teachers and, you know, averages are, you know, you gotta get beyond averages, but let's talk about it. Fifty three thousand five hundred. Georgia is fifty five thousand. That includes Atlanta. Hamilton County fifty three five. Atlanta, I mean, Georgia, including Atlanta, fifty five thousand five hundred. Plus they pay six percent income tax. Another thing that just drove me crazy is Brett Goldberg did not include thousand dollar step increases as payroll increases. Uh, that's absurd. We need transparency.
All right, thank you. We have a teacher who has a question for us and she is Colleen Ryan from Rivermont Elementary. Colleen, good to see you. What's your question?
Good to see you too. So, um, in two thousand sixteen, I co-founded The Passage. Um, because as teachers, we were noticing that test scores were not where they needed to be. So looking at two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, which was the last one with a completed published test data, only thirty six point one percent of third graders in Hamilton County were reading on grade level and tested there. Despite Hamilton County outperforming the state in a number of areas. What steps do you think we should take to improve elementary student literacy? And are you satisfied with the current methods of testing for such results?
Tom, you have this one first.
Okay. Uh, thank you because you're, you're focused on something that is near and dear to me because that is a measure of how children are going to do. Let me tell you, the thirty six, again, watch out for averages. Take out the high performing schools. Let's take out the high performing schools and then tell me what that average at River, Rivermont is. Uh, our, we have increased our, I think it's gone like from thirty three and a half to thirty four, up to maybe, I don't, I have not seen thirty six. I've seen maybe thirty four and a half. It has been very small. We have got to figure out what is going on that our students are not reaching literacy at a better rate than thirty five percent. I'll give you thirty six. It's still terrible. Look at it this way, sixty four percent aren't. Let's talk about the sixty four percent that are not achieving literacy by third, in the third grade. That is, and then take out the high performing schools and I, you're probably talking ten percent or ninety percent that aren't achieving literacy.
All right, Marco?
Well, so let's take concrete steps, uh, in order to, to improve our literacy. One of the, uh, steps that we've taken as, as a district, uh, and, you know, that I look forward to seeing the results of is adopting a literacy curriculum across the district that uses the science of reading in order to help, uh, help our students achieve goals. Uh, we need to, for the first time, district-wide, we have a curriculum for, for reading that, uh, I, you know, that we will measure and, and, and ensure is actually achieving the results we want. Uh, many of our students are coming to school not prepared. And so the, uh, early childhood support that we can provide in order to get them ready before they even enter school uh, is, is going to be valuable as well. Uh, and then we need to be able to, to come around individual students and support them as they, as they move forward.
And Tom, any rebuttal?
Well, uh, Marco said something very correct, the science of literacy. We are very blessed in Chattanooga to have a great institution, UTC, where we have two professors that, uh, I have been meeting with that have shown me the pathway towards literacy. And I, I do believe that if we call on our, our, our friends at UTC, what an asset that is. And, and, and let's focus on this literacy. There are very, it is a science. And we have to understand how, how we get there.
Colleen, thank you so much. Look forward to seeing you back in the classroom soon, hopefully.
Thank you.
Colleen Ryan, thank you very much. Uh, gentlemen, let's go back to the budget a little bit. Uh, every year, the budget is hotly debated and contested and it reflects the priorities for the upcoming school year. And, and everybody's got priorities, teacher pay, maintenance, transportation, food, technology, leadership, we can go down the list. So let me ask each of you to prioritize what the top three things should be when we're considering a budget. And considering how there are things cut every year, what, if anything, would you cut? And Marco, you go first.
Uh, so as far as priorities, obviously, uh, you've heard me say it. I think teachers are the backbone of our, of our schools and we need to be able to support them. Supporting them also implies having, uh, having the support staff that, uh, that helps enhance the education of our students. Um, and so, uh, that being our first priority, uh, I think second, we need to make sure transportation is safe. Uh, that is clear for us and, and, uh, we want to make sure that the safety of our, of our students is first and foremost and, uh, in our, our path forward. And, um, and then third, I think again, our infrastructure, we, we have to focus on, we can't let it, um, let it fall, uh, back. So, so those are our priorities. As far as cutting the budget, uh, I, I would never make that statement here because I think we need to, uh, meet together with the team and the staff and figure out where exactly the, the priorities would be in order to be able to achieve our results that we want.
All right, Tom, he listed in order, teacher pay, transportation, infrastructure, maintenance, and, uh, did not answer or did not prefer to answer on what he would cut. Your turn.
Well, I don't know why we're talking about cutting. Now, we may have to cut. I, I mean, we don't know. I mean, i- if the state cuts our funding, we're going to have to cut. I, you know, but, but again, the COVID thing is, uh, very, uh, who knows what's going to happen. I, I think I, I said the teacher pay, we're, we're, we're in there. We are, I think, in a good place. Now, uh, can we improve? Yes. Let's, I'm going to go back to that twelve million dollar. I, I don't know what you call it. It's not slash fun, but it's couch money. It's a lot of couch money. Let's take some of that twelve million, but let's budget correctly. Let's really look at how much we're spending in the central office. Let's, uh, you're asking me where to spend money. I'm, I'm, I'm asking where to reallocate money. I want to reallocate it out of the central office. I want to reallocate it to, uh, making sure our teachers are properly paid. Making sure that our teachers have what they need in the classrooms. Making sure that, uh, our schools are in good shape, uh, physically. And, uh, those would be, those would be my three, uh, areas.
All right, Marco, rebuttal?
With regards to the central office, I think again, what we're looking at is achieving results. And we've seen excellent results, uh, based on bringing excellent and high-quality staff. Uh, I think we have top staff that have allowed us to, uh, see improvements in our school now. Um, uh, that's because they're able to offer the supports that we need in order for, for our schools and our teachers to, to be able to, to reach their goals. So, um, so I'm, I'm always hesitant when we, uh, when we address that because we've made some changes and we're seeing results and that's what we want to see at the end of the day.
Next question deals with the topic of discipline in our schools. A report from the Southern Poverty Law Center and UCLA Center for Civil Rights Remedies found that where corporal punishment is used in schools, black students and students with disabilities are more likely to be struck by an educator. Corporal punishment in schools is an emotional and controversial topic for many people. Time to cast, well, we'll start with you. What's your view on corporal punishment?
I'm not for corporal punishment. I am not, uh, just for the reasons you said. What I did say is I did break line one time and I was, I, I, I felt Dr. Carter's paddle on the back of my thighs and that I've never broke line again. There should be a fair, effective and enforceable standard of conduct. I, I think right now we've got like a forty-page kind of manual that the teachers have got to suffer through. Uh, there has got to be, uh, parental responsibility. We have got to have a discipline that promotes the respect for authority and peers, other class, I mean, other students. We've got to demand that our T, our students are obedient. And we've got to demand that they show personal responsibility. I think if you can't get a code of conduct to be less than a half a page, you're, you're, you're handcuffing the teachers and you're looking for trouble. But corporal punishment, absolutely not.
Marco, what steps do you favor in terms of bringing discipline?
I'm, I'm glad to hear that, uh, that my opponent is against corporal punishment now. So, um, so that's, um, yeah, because I, that, I, that is shocking to me to think that we would consider bringing, uh, corporal punishment back in, into our schools. Um, I do think, uh, the realities of our schools, uh, mean that it will certainly always be much more than a forty, than a half a page, uh, discipline manual. We have a code of acceptable student behavior and discipline, uh, which outlines the behaviors expected throughout the whole county. And, and if it's applied uniformly, we avoid some of the, uh, issues regarding, uh, racial disbalances and, 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 uh, those students with special needs that are, uh, being, um, uh, according to this code, uh, unfairly. So we need to make sure that the code is applied fairly to all, to all students.
Tom, any rebuttal?
I, I want to make sure that, uh, we all understand I was never for corporal punishment. Teachers, principals, let each principal and teacher control their classroom. Let each principal control their school. That's why, that's why we have principals. Let them be in charge and don't, please, let's give them the latitude and the teachers in the classroom to do what they need to do, for goodness sakes. If a, one child is disruptive, it's disrupting the learning ability of the other fourteen. The teacher is our front line of defense. They're trained. That's who we're paying to manage a classroom. If that child is not going to behave, then the principal needs to step in. Now, I, I understand that there's, uh, issues along race and poverty, you know, race and socioeconomics. But come on, let's, let's let the teachers and the principals control their schools and their classrooms. And let's not have an overly complicated, uh, discipline, uh, regimen. Children need to respect authority. They need to respect each other and they need to practice obedience.
All right, we're in the home stretch here. We want to take this opportunity to thank our candidates and those of you watching. We appreciate you hanging in there. We have time for a couple more questions. Nearly two-thirds of black and Latino students in Hamilton County attend what would be considered high poverty schools. And so this is a yes or no question. Do you think it's important to increase the racial and economic integration in our schools? If you say yes, how are you going to make that happen? If you say no, why not? Marco?
So the first thing we, y- yes, but it's complicated, right? Um, the first thing, uh, that we are doing now is offering opportunity for students to choose schools outside of the school that they're, that they're born in. So through open enrollment, through magnet schools and through, uh, future-ready institutes, many of our students can choose to, to study uh, in schools that are better geared to their, uh, to their needs and, and supportive of the results that we want to see. Uh, I want to continue encouraging that. Um, I think those opportunities are good. But obviously, we also need to improve, um, I think those opportunities are good, but obviously, we also need to improve the quality of the schools that are underperforming, no matter where they are. So we need to make sure that we are providing the right teachers, giving them the right training, and providing the right support in order to enhance the education in these additional schools that are still underperforming and where students may be zoned for and may need to improve their capacity.
Tom?
No, I mean, I don't believe in any form of enhanced transportation or whatever you want to call it. Every child has the fundamental right to go to a good, clean school, safe school. Whether that's open enrollment, fine. If a child has got the ability to get to another school, I think we should afford that child the opportunity to do that. Future-ready, I'm hoping that it's getting what it needs to get done. Magnet schools are a great way to let those children get to other places. But man, you know, what bothers me is, you know, do we siphon off the, you know, the top performers in those low-performing schools? That's scary. We really have no question but that every child needs to have an education that is equal across this district.
And Marco, any rebuttal?
I mean, the question I have with that answer is, this is what we've been doing and calling for. So in the meantime, I want to make sure that our students, as we continue to improve each one of our schools, that our students have opportunity to go to schools that best meet their needs and help them reach their fullest potential.
Final question for the candidates in the District Two race tonight focuses on staff recruitment and promotion. As all of us have seen in our own lives, great school leaders can set the stage for great teachers by creating an environment and culture that supports high expectations, innovation, excellence. And great teachers truly transform the lives of their students as one of the students' most important role models and mentors. A committed teacher is vital in the student's academic success and helping students envision and explore a whole lifetime of success. So our question is, what strategies would you propose the school system implement to attract and retain great teachers and leaders? To you first, Tom.
Well, I can tell you, every teacher that I had at Signal Mountain, at Signal Mountain Junior High School, so Dave, you are absolutely correct. Teachers make a huge difference on the life of the child. They inspire us, they teach us, they're role models. Yeah, I'm going to get back to what the teachers want. It's more than salaries and it's more than benefits. It's the chance to go into a classroom and know that they're being supported by a great principal, that they have the supplies they need, that they have everything they need to teach, not maintain order, but to teach. You know, so it's a big question, how do you get there? You know, look, we're doing the right things, we're making, we are making progress and I'm very happy with that. Do we need more? Absolutely. But I think the environment in which a teacher teaches is what attracts good teachers. And I think autonomy of the principal and the teacher to do what they need to do without the constraints of the bureaucracy.
Marco, how do we recruit and retain good teachers?
Yeah, so let's begin by retaining good teachers, right? We have excellent teachers in our community. We have excellent teachers in our school. And even as I speak to those in what we call underperforming schools, some of the teachers there are exceptional and are some of the best teachers in the county. And so we have excellent teachers. They need to understand that they are valued by us as a community. They need to be respected as professionals. We need to make sure that we are compensating them correctly and therefore we can retain the best. And good teachers attract good teachers. As our district begins to recruit, they need to recruit intentionally, they need to recruit nationally, and they need to highlight the path and vision that we're heading. I think as we encourage people to understand the vision of our district to become the best district in the state, it will in itself encourage teachers to look at us. And then we need to hire early and we need to have a very rigid recruitment process to make sure that we're competing against the districts that are also trying to take some of the best teachers in the state.
Tom, any rebuttal?
I'm going to go back to, yes, we certainly need to be competitive in our pay and our benefits, but I do believe what a teacher wants is the ability to teach. And principals want the ability to manage without too much interference. If the school and the teacher, if they're not getting the job done, we'll know it. Let, let, give our teachers environments that are inviting to those teachers and will, and have a vigorous recruitment and we'll get good teachers and we'll retain good teachers. But let them teach, let them manage.
All right, I'm doing the math here. I think we may have time for one more question. We promised you five folks would go to seven o'clock and we're going to do it. You're going to get your money's worth here. And Marco, I'll give you the first response on this one. This isn't scripted, so frankly, I may be out of order here, but anyway, we'll do that. As I've often said, if you go to the parking lot of a retail store in Hamilton County and ask 10 citizens randomly, what do we need to do about expenses with the county schools? Most would probably say that central, that central office is top-heavy. You've got too much fat at the top. We need to trim the fat. We hear that over and over. Every time there's an election year, every time there's a tax increase proposed, let's trim the central office. So Marco, you get first shot at that. Is that an accurate statement?
Again, I look at results and I look at how we have improved and I look at what we're doing. Sure, I'm positive there's always somewhere where we can reduce some of our costs, but we are within the standards and the recommendations that are given to us in many of the positions. We need people who will support the rest of the work in order to achieve the results that we want. As we begin to see results, our community will be impacted by that. We will attract better, better businesses that will establish themselves because they know they can attract a strong workforce. And all of that will generate more revenue and more income for us as a community. So we need to make sure that our scrolls are our top priority and what was working in the past or what we were doing in the past didn't work, we're now seeing results that are effective and supportive of the goals that we have. Yes, running excellent schools requires our investment as a community. And I believe we are a community that's willing to invest in our schools.
Tom, central office, top-heavy or not?
It's got to be top-heavy. You know, we talk about data, 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 data. I'm not against data, I'm an accountant. I think data is important. How much are we spending on data? I want to know that. How much are we spending on testing? How much effort in the classroom do teachers have to go through to fill out the data? And then what does the data tell us? We've improved from 30, excuse me, we've gone from 34 to 35% literacy over three years? What, do I think, I mean, I think we've got like five or six people in the press office of the superintendent, you know, to spend, you know, that we have, you know, all these fives where, what were the fives? The fives were, they were improvement and I'm thankful for it. We got to keep improving. But have we really gotten there when most of our grad, so many of our graduating seniors have to take remedial courses at Chattanooga State? I don't need testing to tell me that. I need Chattanooga State's telling us that. We've got to get our students better prepared. Central office expenditures does not do that. I don't think that applying all these tests and collecting all these data, I mean, if I get in there and I can be shown that, okay. But what I know is just from that $12 million I talked about with the staffing budget, I want to know what else is out there. I want to get a deep dive into that budget.
Dave, did you have a bonus question? We still have a little time.
Well, you could touch on it a little bit earlier, Tom, the proposal for some of these facilities, the idea's been thrown out there of moving CSLA to, out to Northgate. You have, you said you had concerns about that. How do we pick the best school sites? And is the mall an appropriate site for a school facility in your mind?
Well, I sell businesses, I mean, that's my profession, I sell businesses. If we're going to sell a business, we prepare a book on what we need and then we send that book out to, you know, on a business or let's talk about schools. We send that request for proposal, I would send it out to 10 people and then expect to get back, not have any discussion whatsoever with the developer, calling each individual on the school board lobbying to do a deal, you know, to buy a Sears building. We've got 78 schools where we say we've got too many and now we're going to go build another one and we're going to add a high school to it? Now, there's a way to do things. There is a way to approach capital needs, but it's not allowing the developer to call each school board individual, school board member.
Marco, do we, should we locate a school at the mall? And in general, how do we pick school sites for the future? Do we have too many schools?
Should we locate, you asked me many questions there, but should we locate the school at the mall? I think it was an innovative idea, it was creative. I think one of the challenges when we work as a school board is that you have to be transparent and public about the intent. And I think in some of those opportunities, some people may take advantage of knowing what normally, if you're selling businesses back and forth, you would keep quiet. But we have to be open and transparent in the process. We have to be communicating to our community about what we're doing. And as a school board, we need to make sure that the community feels that we are being clear about that moving forward. As far as, you know, the results, I think, I think at the end of the day, we, you know, we will see what happens. But we do know that CSLA is in a building that is no longer sustainable and we need to make sure that we find an opportunity for our students to be in a place, as we've said, that is worthy of Hamilton County.
All right, I'm going to squeeze in one more question, if I may, and I think then we'll have time for the closing statements. Or Molly, did you want to go ahead and close? I see you there.
Hi, David. Yeah, I think we might just have time for closing statements at this point.
Well, let's do that, let's do that then. And we'll ask each candidate to, I believe you have, is it two minutes? Yes, for each closing statement. And we'll begin with Marco and you may already have your closing statement scripted. If I may offer a suggestion, I would just like to know what would be different about you as opposed to your opponent on the school board? Marco, you go first.
Well, let me, let me share where I'm coming from. This is a personal investment for me. I'm invested in the results as my own family is impacted by this reality. When my wife and I were looking for where we would raise our girls and we would ask about different communities, our most important question was where would our, where would our girls, where would our daughters go to school? And sometimes the answer we would get was just an answer that highlighted a weakness in our community. We would get an answer right away that said, well, we have great private schools in the area. And although that's true, that was an insufficient answer. So we moved to Signal Mountain and we've seen the opportunity of the public education for our, for our students. And for me personally, it burdened me with wanting to see that same opportunity for all the students in Hamilton County. We have grown in the last few years. I've seen the impact. I've even seen the pride that our community has began to rally around our public school system. I've talked to many parents in District Two over the last months, many of whom are proud of Red Bank, they're proud of Alpine Crest, they're proud of Rivermont and the fact that there's growth and opportunity in each one of those schools. And I think we need to make sure that every one of our students has an opportunity for an excellent education regardless of where they live. We need to make sure that we're providing the resources around our schools. We need to support every one of our teachers. They need to know that we value them as professionals and that we treat them as experts in their field and that we provide them with also the tools that they need in order to succeed with the curriculum and with additional resources many of our teachers give of their own time and of their own resources in order to achieve their results. And we, as a community, need to do that. And then we need to make sure that every one of our buildings is a building that is up to a level that we, as Hamilton County, can be proud of for the rest of our community. There are those who want to go back to how things were and that's, you know, that's insufficient for us because what has happened in the past has not been, has not been excellent for everybody along the way. So we need to make sure that our focus forward, especially in the years to come, ensures the capacity and opportunity for everybody in our, in our district.
Thank you. Tom DeCosmo, your closing statement?
Marco, I can't tell you how lucky you are to have had Signal Mountain High School to send your kids. I didn't have that opportunity. My children went to through, they had seven years in the public school system. There was no Signal Mountain Elementary, Signal Mountain High School. I am so proud of my children. Garnet is a CPA, got his degree from the University of Georgia in the school, from the School of Public and International Affairs, worked on Capitol Hill for three different senators and is now working in the office of the governor. My daughter has her doctorate in public health, has her master's degree in art therapy. I'm so proud of both of them. And I think they got their early, early, you know, the first seven years in our public schools. My goodness, I wish that Signal Mountain High School would have been there. Now, what I, what I'm, what I will bring to the school board is not just my 40 years of accounting and, you know, corporate finance, working as a, working as a, you know, in the, in our community. You know, I'm the chairman of the, I was the chairman of the board of Chattanooga Bible Institute. We took that school from five counselors. We had a counseling program with five counselors. We now have 270 full-time people getting their master's degree in counseling. That's what I, I've been involved with that school ever since. I knew how to get that done. We now, we had zero in our endowment 10 years ago. We have $7 million in our endowment. 270 people getting their master's degree based in Chattanooga. It's one of the great success stories of Chattanooga. I have been there from the beginning. I knew how it got done. I think we can do the same for our public school system. I'm ready to do it. I'm ready to make our schools the spotlight of the South.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Marco. We really appreciate you being a part of this forum tonight. Now, I'll hand it back to Molly Blankenship, the executive director for Chattanooga 2.0.
Thank you, Dave. And wow, I think both of our candidates deserve a round of applause for their engagement tonight. So thank you both so much for participating and again, for your interest in serving in this really vital leadership role. Thank you to our moderators and to our co-hosts, WRCB Channel 3 and the Chattanooga Times Free Press. Thank you to Erica, to Rain and to Colleen for their excellent questions. Actually, that was Stephanie that joined us. And last but not least, I want to thank you all, our viewers, for your engagement and for tuning in tonight. If you missed the first part of tonight's debate for District Two, the video recording will be available later this evening on WRCB's YouTube channel. And tomorrow night, we will be right back here at 5:30 PM for the District Seven School Board Debate between incumbent Joe Wingate and candidate Debbie Myers. Please don't forget that early voting starts this Friday, July 17th. And this year, registered voters can vote by mail using an absentee ballot and checking the COVID-19 option. The deadline to request an absentee ballot is July 30th. I encourage you to head over to the Decision 2020 page on WRCB's website as well as the Chattanooga Times Free Press website where you will find more information about candidates, upcoming elections on August 6th, and how to request your absentee ballot. In closing, 2020 has no doubt been a trying year for our community. And so we believe that strong leadership on the Hamilton County School Board, as you've heard tonight, is needed now more than ever as we seek to recover and to reopen and to continue to make Hamilton County schools the best school district in the state of Tennessee. And so again, I thank you for your engagement on this critical topic and And so again, I thank you for your engagement on this critical topic, and have a good evening. We will see you tomorrow, and stay safe out there.